Good afternoon, everyone. Today is November 4, 2025. This is the City of Prescott City Council Voting Meeting. Welcome, everyone. We have a relatively short agenda list today, but I have a feeling it will probably take a little time to get through it. So we'll start off with introductions and announcements. Mayor Protem?
I have one large announcement today, and I think everybody will know this already, but I'd like to remind you anyway. Today is Election Day. If you still have your ballot, please remember that ballots should not be mailed at this point. To make sure your vote is counted, ballots must be dropped off in person at Yavapai County Recorder's Office at 1015 Fair Street. Ballots must be received by 7:00 PM this evening, so please plan accordingly to allow enough time to deliver yours. And thank you to everyone for participating in this important local election and making your voice heard. And that's it, Mayor.
That's amazingly short, Mayor Protem, but thank you very much for that. We'll now have an invocation from Pastor Levi Minder from the Alliance Bible Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance conducted by Councilman Montoya.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you today and thank you for another beautiful day here in Prescott. Lord, I thank you for these elected officials, God, that you've brought here and given the authority to rule and lead in our country and our city. And, Lord, we just thank you. I pray that you give them wisdom and guidance as they deal with some of these mundane things, but, Lord, they're important because they allow us to live peaceful, good lives, godly, and upright. Lord, once more, we just ask that you look down upon us as we make these decisions, lead and guide, and God give you a blessing. In Jesus' name, amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll start with roll call, please.
Mayor, good.
Present.
Mayor Protem Cantelmi.
Here.
Councilwoman Furrworth.
Here.
Councilman Gambogi.
I am here.
Councilman Grady.
Here.
Councilman Montoya.
Here.
And Councilman Moore.
Here.
All are present.
Very good. We have one proclamation today, Patient Blood Management Awareness Week. Councilman Montoya?
I think it's Councilman Gambogi.
All right, then, Councilman Gambogi.
Do we have anybody here from Dignity Health? So, whereas the City of Prescott is pleased to join Dignity Health, the Yavapai Regional Medical Center located in our city, as it celebrates Patient Blood Management Awareness Week, November 3 through 7, 2025, and whereas Dignity Health, Yavapai Regional Medical Center, is staffed by professionals with a commitment to improving patient outcomes through optimal blood management, and whereas patient blood management is the appropriate provision and use of blood, its components and derivatives, and strategies to reduce or avoid the need for blood transfusion, and whereas Patient Blood Management Awareness Week speaks to the concerns of every person to have the best health care available to them, respecting individual preferences and beliefs, and continuing education of health care professionals to provide that care, and whereas Dignity Health Center is... Whereas we commend the members of Dignity Health, the Yavapai Regional Medical Center, for extending themselves in service to others according to their commitment to improving patient outcomes. Now, therefore, Phil Good, Mayor of the great city of Prescott, does hereby proclaim the week of November 3 through November 7, 2025, as Patient Blood Management Awareness Week.
Did you want to get a picture before I say?
Great. I would say a few words. Thank you so much, Councilman and Mayor and other council members and members of the community. This is a big deal, so I just want to thank everyone very much. This is an incredible honor. Your steadfast support of this health care initiative is just amazing, and I will say that on behalf of everyone at Dignity Health, Y R M C, particularly our dedicated patient blood management team here with me today, we're deeply grateful for this recognition. This is a proclamation of Patient Blood Management Awareness Week in the City of Prescott, and also it is nationally as well. This proclamation is more than just a formal acknowledgement. It's a powerful validation of the critical work our team performs every day. It's a cornerstone of modern, safe, and compassionate care. It ensures that we're providing the most effective and best care possible for all of our patients in our community. It optimizes your own health, and it judiciously uses our precious resources. So we're committed to continuing to advance these practices at Dignity Health, Y R M C, and to collaborating with our community about the benefits of patient blood management. So thank you again for this very meaningful recognition. It motivates us, our entire team, to continue striving toward excellence in patient care. Thank you.
Now we'll move on to the open call to the public.
Thank you, Mayor. The City of Prescott welcomes public engagement. Residents may comment and address the council regarding matters that are not included on the posted agenda during the call to the public. If you wish to speak, please complete a green speaker card and submit it to me prior to the meeting being convened. As a reminder, speakers are limited to four minutes, and the call to the public will be limited to 40 minutes in total with the following stipulations. Citizens are limited to addressing the council on the same topic only four times in total. If a topic has been addressed more than five times by different speakers, the mayor may limit future discussions on the topic, and topics of our primarily national concern may be limited at the discretion of the mayor. And I do not have any comment cards today, Mayor.
I'm shocked. So in that case, we will move on to the consent agenda. Does any member of the council wish to pull any of the three items on our consent agenda?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I wish to remove approval, this is Consent Agenda C, approval of the proposed workforce housing policy, off of the consent agenda for more discussion.
Very good. Any other items? In that case, I'll entertain a motion for the remaining two items on the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 8A and B.
Second.
I have a motion as second. Please vote.
Pass the 7-0.
Councilman Grady?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I wrote out my comments because I want to make sure there's the clarity that I hope. So first, know that I support the work of the Workforce Housing Committee. I pulled this item off the consent agenda to have some further discussion. There are a number of questions raised at last week's meeting, questions and concerns that we can't answer at this point, and I accept that. But I'm concerned, and continue to be so, about potential fiscal impacts related to the number of recommendations that include city financial incentives. I'm concerned that adopting this policy sends a message that the city supports all of the recommended programmatic options in this document. I've been involved in several policy documents over my 30-year local government career. They've never been 27 pages long. I came across this definition of policy, quote, "a deliberate system of guidelines to guide decisions and achieve rational outcomes. A policy is a statement of intent and is implemented as a procedure or a protocol." So adopting a policy is a statement of intent of what this city is going to do, not simply do more research and analyze it more, but we're going to implement this policy. With all that in mind and recognizing that we're going to and we should proceed forward on this important initiative, I would strongly recommend this very modest revision to amend the title and call this document the 2025 Workforce Housing Policy Framework.
Councilwoman Furr...
Thank you, Mayor. I too feel that we have a lot of support and a lot... You know, we all heard that last week, but I also feel like we have a lot of learning yet to go, and I too was worried about the financial commitment and that we really understand what we're getting into. So I do very much appreciate the word "framework." If that's what works with local government and corporate America, we would have called it like a blueprint, but that sounds much more in building code language, like that's what we're going to do. So I like the word "framework." I think we have a lot of learning to do that'll give us the time over the next year to learn and improve and hopefully someday get to a policy, period.
Any other comments or concerns? Councilman Montoya?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess dealing... I'm sensitive to Councilman Grady's concern as well as Councilwoman Furrworth. I'm looking at the City Council Agenda Item, and it cover memo for this, and it says there's no fiscal impact associated with this item at this time. Could you expand on that, City Manager?
I would emphasize the "at this time" part. We don't have great estimates on it. We've started to look at like sample cases and, you know, figure out scenarios. A lot of the elements of the plan have... It will depend on the situation, on how much it costs, what the pickup rate is, that kind of stuff. So there's not any numbers we can give you right now. That doesn't mean there's not a fiscal impact.
So I guess what I'm driving at, though, City Manager, is my sense is that any subsequent items that come out of this housing policy, whether you call it a framework or not, are going to be subject to council approval later, either through the regular budgeting process or as a one-off to be included in the budget process. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, myself, of course, I can't do this, but if I was queen for the day, I would change it to "framework" also, and it is a framework the way it is. I understand your concern with the word "policy," but I want to remind everybody, too, that this is a living document. We're learning as we go, too, although we did consult other municipalities on their policy, and as Amber knows, she did all the hard work. We crafted ours based on some of their failures, but it is a roadmap. It's a roadmap for developers, anybody who would like to step into the world of workforce housing. It's a very complicated world to be in because there's so many rules and regulations, and as we just saw Doug here, our CBO, talk about the building codes, there's way more than that even involved in workforce housing. But remember, one of the things that I know you all weren't there, but during the Workforce Housing Committee meetings, we invited Joe Young, actually came in, and Matt Podraki, and initially we had shall... The city shall do this, the city shall do that. We were able to remove, with the committee's blessing, all of the "shalls" to "mayes." We also, instead of being so pointed on many of the, what I call the giveaways or the incentives, we also decided to add in there on a case-by-case basis to be decided by the council. So for example, as Nicole Kennedy was always so very good, she's... I don't think she's here today, talking about prospective, you know, projects that would come forward, it would be really up to the council to decide if this project, you know, hypothetical project were to come to us, is this something that would benefit the city immensely? And if it is, that's the council's decision to decide what those incentives would be that would be given to the developer. Now, remember, there's development impact fees, which I'm encouraging everybody to protect because they have to be paid. They're either going to be paid by the developer or by the taxpayer, but there's other fees associated with these projects, and we talked a lot about what happens in the Building Department, Community Development. So there's different types of fees other than they're just development fees, not development impact fees. So those incentives would be given to some of the prospective workforce housing companies. But this provides a roadmap, again, for people that want to step into this because we do have a need in our city. We're not unlike many other municipalities, but this is a guideline for them to be able to come in, decide if they want to do it. There's a fair amount of risk involved in it because a lot of these developers cannot be asked to work for free, and we had a bona fide contractor here pencil it out, and he said there was no profit. You have to achieve your profit a different way, and that's why you've got to be very open-minded. So I think that this framework idea is not a bad idea to consider, but in general, the policy has been worked over to death, in my opinion, and we've done the best we can to leave it open so that the council can make that ultimate decision. Thank you.
Councilman Gambogi?
Could I ask Councilman Grady to repeat what you wanted to change the wording to?
Yes, to 2025 Workforce Housing Policy Framework.
And from what you heard from other council members... Or, excuse me, second question. What was your concern in the first place?
So my concern in the first place is that we have over 25, maybe up to 30, different financial and other recommendations that could be adopted in the future, and the word "policy," as I read in that particular definition, generally connotes that the city is, in fact, intentionally looking at implementing all, not necessarily all of those, and I know and I agree with the councilwoman's, you know, counter that we're not going to do all of these, but that's not what a policy says. It's not saying we're going to pick and choose. It's a policy that we're proposing to adopt.
Thank you. Councilman Montoya?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I have a question. Maybe this is a legal question, Joe, but are we bound by doing the things in this policy just because we adopt it today? Or can we, as a council, decide later not to do things prescribed in this policy?
Yeah, council, and I think what we're hearing is a little bit of a debate about intent on future projects, but in terms of what the document itself does, it doesn't force... And I think, if I may, I may be guessing or supposing, but I think a lot of this has to do with the impact fees that could be waived or paid for by the city, but it doesn't obligate us to do so on any particular project.
Thank you, Joe.
Well, I have to tell you that I have a certain number of questions I have to have answered before I can support any voted-on policy for the committee or the city as a whole. Number one, does it have to be done? And I think workforce housing is a substantial challenge that I would certainly like to see accomplished, so I think I can answer yes to that. Does it have to be done now? I don't know that I have to agree that this policy has to be adopted right now. I think it's very vague. It's very undefined about the costs and the regulations that might have to be adopted if this policy is agreed upon. How much will it cost? We don't know the answer to that. It can be cost a wide range of costs based upon what kind of a project is being proposed. Who pays for it? And I think the answer to that is a combination of maybe developers, maybe the property owner, maybe the city. So that's a big, multiple question mark, and does it lead to bigger government? And I think the answer to that is, yeah, it probably will. So it just doesn't meet my criteria to be voted on and approved now. So with that said, I guess someone's going to have to make a motion here.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we approve the workforce housing policy with the amendment of adding the word "framework" after the word "policy."
Second.
Do we have any public comment on this?
We do not, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion as second. Please vote.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Grady proposed removing policy and putting in "framework," but you're okay with policy "framework"? Okay.
Okay.
Pass the 6-1.
All right, we'll move on to the regular agenda. Item 9A.
Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Updates to Article 9, Section 6 of the Prescott City Charter: Majority to Elect in a Primary for Approval at a Future Election. Staff does not have a formal presentation on this item. There were three options that were provided to the council included in the agenda packet materials based on discussion at the previous study session. Option 1 would be to maintain the current charter language with slight modification to include clarifying language about how the majority is calculated, but still calculating ballot's cast. Option 2 would be to revise the language to mirror the state statute, and Option 3 would be to revise the language to state that the top vote-getters in the primary are duly elected, essentially eliminating the need for a general election unless there was a ballot measure or something specific that we needed to bring forward in a general. We are happy to take any council feedback regarding these proposed options or others. This would have to come back to the council in the future for adoption of ballot language and final approval, but today we're looking for specific feedback on if and how the council would like to proceed on moving forward for potential charter amendment, which would, again, eventually go to the voters.
All right, before I ask for comments from council, I will say that Mayor Lett Cathy Rusing approached me and said that she is planning to do a number of charter amendments once the new council is seated, and this certainly would require a charter amendment. And it's another one of those potential issues that doesn't necessarily have to be done now. Obviously, we had some, a lot of controversy about who achieved the majority to be able to be seated in the primary, and almost every one of those had to go to a runoff that'll be determined today. So it's my feeling that this issue should be postponed until the new council is seated and the new mayor can determine whether they're going to work on other charter amendments, including this one. So with that said, I'll take comments. Councilman Montoya?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with everything you just said, so I don't even think that it's appropriate that we continue to discuss this. I would suggest that this is a topic better suited for the next council, and given how expensive it is to conduct a special election for the city, I would hope that the next council would try to follow the model that you did with the Charter Amendment Committee, have a lot of discussion, have a lot of communication back and forth, but frankly, that's their call, not mine, and so I don't think that we really need to make a determination on this because I think there's, what, one, two, three, four people up here right now who won't be up here after the next meeting? So that's just my take.
Thank you, Councilwoman Furrworth.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually very much agree with you to postpone this to the next council. One other thing for consideration, because this council has been divided on this question, and I did ask Joe Young if it would be possible, because we really want to understand the public, is it possible to put forward two charter amendments? And let's see what the people think. So I just want, before I'm with you, and I just wanted to get his answer so that I could start putting it in everyone's brain to think about it.
Yeah, and absolutely. We can have alternative options for the same charter provision, and so you haven't made any action today, but if it's postponed for the next council, we'll have that prepared and how that would look like.
Councilman Gambogi?
I want to go on record as saying that I support Option 1.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. This is also probably a question for Joe. Joe, what is the downside of Option 2, standardizing and adopting the state statute?
I don't think that legally there's a downside. It's a question of policy and a question of governance, so I could kind of discuss what it means, but I don't think there's a downside from a legal perspective. You're just weighing both kind of how difficult it is to go through the primary process, the ease of manipulating the process, and efficiency arguments, and those are just kind of three competing arguments that are on a sliding scale. So I would say legally, no downside.
Thank you, and I want to go on the record for saying I would definitely support Option 2. I'd like to standardize that. Thank you.
Councilman Grady?
I just wanted to add my vote that we defer this.
Councilman Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's appropriate to defer it, too, but I would go on record that I would support Option Number 2.
Very well, then I think I will make a motion that we table this...
Mayor, you have public comment? Mayor, you have public comment if you'd like to take it? It's up to you.
No, I don't think we need to. If we're going to postpone this to the next council, any public comment can be submitted at that time. So I propose that we table this issue probably maybe even the first meeting of the new council, and they can decide whether they want to address it at that time as an individual concern, or whether the new mayor decides to create a charter review committee and include it at that time.
I did speak with her about that before. I know she plans on doing a couple of different mayoral ad hocks and charter review is one of them, so we'll make sure to include this particular item on that group's list.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Passes six one.
Very good. I will move on to item 9B.
Presentation, discussion, and possible action regarding a conceptual site plan for West Granite Creek Park.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Kristi Diaz-Trahan, your Parks and Recreation Director. I'm happy to be here this afternoon. In February, you all took a field trip, and you gave staff direction, and today we are bringing that direction to fruition for a decision. There we go. Okay, so sometimes fingers on keyboards get a little ahead of you. That 2020 on top should be 2000. The master plan was adopted and approved in 2000, and that's also when the land and water conservation funds were used to assist with the purchase of West Granite Creek Park. In 2021, the Hilton Garden Inn completed and included the installation of a splash pad, and that was part of their development agreement, and the West Granite Creek Park gradually became a parking lot. In 2025, Recreation Services presented a concept plan that included 44 parking spaces. Through community engagement and concern of those parking spaces, you took your field trip. So today, where we are talking about that, I will be asking for council direction, and specifically during that meeting on, in April, or excuse me, in February, there were four specific items that council wanted to see in a plan coming back. First and foremost, it was restoration of the park. Second was to reduce the parking spaces based on that conceptual plan. Third was to include an ADA parking space. And fourth, to include a drop-off area. And if I may, I believe the mayor talked about in golf courses, there's bag drop-off, right? So, right? I saw that. Look, Mr. Mayor. So today, you're going to see two conceptual plans. One that staff worked with a consultant team on, and then the second was, is community-driven. Both of those plans achieved all four of those items. Okay, forward. Oops, wrong direction. Okay, so this is what you saw on February 11th, right? This is, this is the 44 spaces. And so the two plans are going to be coming up next. As mentioned, both plans achieved all four items. What I want you to know is today, I really am looking for direction as it relates to the parking and circulation. As it relates to the restoration, when I came on board shortly thereafter, I met with members of the coalition associated with this plan, and we have worked together collaboratively and have agreed to work hand in hand on the restoration component of that. As you'll see in the two designs coming up, they're very similar. They include connectivity, they include new plantings, they include a, an adventure trail, they include play spaces. So we are locked in on that. There are just some minor differences on the two plans, so we'll walk through those. Hold on. Before we walk through those, this is what I'd like for you to do, just sort of bear with me. So think if you were going to go to the park for the day. You're in your car, you bring in three people with you, you have sunscreen and water, you have a book, you have a blanket, you have chairs, you have all this stuff, right? And so when you're there, you will need to use that drop-off zone. So as you look at these plans, picture yourself driving into that area and the drop-off zone, and then where you can park. So this is Exhibit A, also known as Attachment A, in your, in your packet. I don't think this has a pointer. Okay, back to that imagination, you're driving to the park, and you have, you're bringing a lot of stuff, right? So you need a drop-off zone. So in here, you're going to make a right turn in Section A, and then through in there, you'll find a place to park. Your three passengers will get off, they'll grab all of their stuff, and while you're, while you are parked in Section A, you can look up to Section C, which is the parking area. There's 20 parking spots in there to include one ADA space. So you can determine if there's space there, you can just make a right in and a right out and go find a place to spark, to park. But if there isn't, then you'll know you can, you can pull out and go to another alternative space, either in the Sam Hill area or the APS area. If you don't need to drop off, you can just pull straight in. There's 19 spaces in there. There's an accessible walkway that gets you down either through the park or going parallel to the parking space, and then around, as you can see in Section B, that's all an accessible path in order to get to the park or the splash pad.
Excuse me, Councilman Gambogi had a question.
I have a question on this slide, and the same question applies to the second slide. How far is the distance from the turnaround to the splash pad? And how far, what's the distance from the parking area to the splash pad on Exhibit A and Exhibit B?
Mr. Mang, Mr. Gambogi, I do not have that information, but I can get that for you. I can probably phone a friend in the back to see if they can hustle that up for me. Okay. Okay, next slide, Exhibit B, right? You're back in your car, you're driving to the park for your day, and in this case, the drop-off is in that red zone, as you can see to the right. And this is, this is like if you're at the gas station, right? You pull in and you go to the first line that's open, and then others can stack up. So in this case, there are no other cars there, you're going to pull in, you're going to drive over the walkway, and then you'll be able to park your, your stuff, and your people can get out, they can go into the park, they can go into the splash pad. And at this point, you can either proceed forward to find a parking space, or you'll make a left, so almost like a, like a somewhat of a U-turn, to be able to go out and then go into the alternative parking space. Again, this space also has the parking spaces, although ADA isn't specifically marked in here, there is area for ADA to be in that parking space, and then, and again, the trail connectivity. In this section, in the kind of brighter red area on the roadway, as you can see, the roadway kind of does like an hourglass, there's a bit of a pinch in there. In this plan, that pinch is intended to slow down traffic, so that, that pinched area is one way. So what the driver would do is if you're entering into that parking space and you see a vehicle leaving, there is room to maneuver to the right to let that pass, the other car come back out, and then you can proceed, and then same thing if you're leaving.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a little clarification on that pinched area. Is that one-way or two-way then?
Excuse me, I'm, I'm, it's one-way. That very pinched area is one-way, so that's intended for one vehicle to go in, and the spirit of that was for, to slow down traffic.
So cars that are parked already, when they go to exit, they will go out around the Sam Hill Warehouse exit?
They can either go through the Sam Hill exit, or they can continue south.
You said it was one-way.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, one vehicle, I misunderstood. So it's one vehicle that can go in, but it's two ways in and out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Grady.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So on Exhibit A, and the area of parking and drop-off area under that proposal, what's that do, how's that compare to Exhibit B and the picnic tables? Does that, does that, that picnic, are they gone in?
Yes.
If you adopt the Kim Lee Horn model?
Correct. So Exhibit A does take up more space in the park for that circular, or for that pull-through in terms of the drop-off area, so there would be not, that area would not be preserved.
Councilman Gambogi.
In the process of calling your friend, would you also let me know how far it is from the Sprouts parking lot to the splash pad?
Sprouts, okay. Okay, so my friend came through. So in Exhibit E, A, the one you're looking at, from the drop-off area to the splash pad is 130 feet to the bridge. From the parking lot, it's 200 feet to the bridge.
Sprouts parking lot?
No, no.
Oh, oh, from the parking lot on Exhibit A?
Correct.
The drop-off parking lot in Exhibit B?
So Exhibit A, in the drop-off area, it's 130 feet to the bridge. From the parking area, it's 200 feet to the bridge.
Both the same, huh?
No, that's Exhibit A.
Oh, well, I thought you went to Exhibit B already.
No, I was clarifying with Councilmember Moore. All right, are we ready to go to B?
Ready.
Here we are. And Exhibit B, it is the same, it's 250 feet to the bridge.
From the parking?
From the parking and the drop-off.
So it's further away?
So everybody have that for B? And then from Sprouts, it's 700 feet.
I'm not talking about the wine racks in Sprouts, I mean, right, the edge, you're just going to cross the street and it's 700 feet?
Councilman Moore was kind of, got onto it. If you park in that parking lot, and that's in front of the bank, and you walk down the street to the crosswalk and then back down, that's why it's longer. Jaywalking would be shorter. Not recommended.
Might be more costly.
Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. So if I can just clarify my understanding of like kind of the structural difference of the two proposed, the two exhibits. In Exhibit A, it looks like the intention is for that to be like kind of a circle pull-in where people are flowing in and out of it, and I guess in my mind, is that, is, I would imagine there'll be signage to kind of communicate that. Seems like it'll shave, shave a little bit of distance to get from the turnaround to the actual splash pad, so its intended function is that it might make it easier if you have a group of people and you kind of send them off, and then you go find alternative parking, wherever that may be, or not even necessarily alternative parking, but the actual intended parking. In Exhibit B, you gain additional space for recreation, but you lose that kind of bigger drop-off areas. Am I getting that right?
You're spot on.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Furrorth.
Thank you, Mayor. Experienced mom with two squirmy boys. Is it possible, building on what Councilman Moore was bringing up, when you get into an Exhibit A, into the roundabout turnaround, is it possible to put some benches on the left so you can have two people sit down, you can drop the cooler with them and everything, and then maybe have to haul all the way out to APS if it's a busy day? My concern was trying to get drivers quickly through A and having to walk the children and the coolers and the, all the other toys, all the way over to E where the parking tables are. So I appreciated him bringing up the, the picnic tables, but I, I understand you said it was space, if there's any way to squeeze in a couple of benches that retired people could also sit on and take in the water.
Yes, absolutely, and the, the restoration, the park design is conceptual. Again, we'll work hand in hand with the community to have site furnishings that are purposeful and meaningful. You're welcome.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. So of late, I've had to deal with a family member now with a walker and a wheelchair. I was hoping we could get some ADA drop-off a little closer to the splash pad, so I'm just going to ask this. I see all the trails, there's no scale on here, but I'm assuming that these are going to be ADA compliant with compaction and width and all their other determinations that, so we are going to follow that? I don't see it listed anywhere.
Although it's not listed, yes, that will be in the design, so all those trail connectivities will have like a packed DG compacted, so that way someone in a chair, in a walker, even just some mobility challenges, it's an easier transition for them to get from the parking lot into the park or to the splash pad.
Yeah, and that'll all be signage for ADA?
Correct, yes, and we'll have, you know, wayfinding signage and, and then also in a, in that circular area, it will be curbed in there, so it is obvious where vehicles are and are not allowed.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that keeping with the spirit of the 2000 master plan, I think it's imperative that as a city, that in addition to looking at the restoration, and I know that you made a comment that, I'm sorry, I'm looking at my notes that I made, but they're on different pages, that this Exhibit A and B were really looking at parking and circulation and not so much at restoration. But as we look at parking and circulation, that's affecting restoration, and we're losing quite a bit of the original park with Exhibit A, and I feel very strongly we need to support Exhibit B as a city council, because that was the original intent of the 2000 master plan. So I just want to say that at this point in the presentation.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more slide.
Yeah, finish up.
So recommendations, so I had technical review, our traffic engineer looked at both plans, and from his perspective, Exhibit A design has a turnaround drop-off area that would reduce the vehicular and traffic, or excuse me, the vehicular and bicycle and pedestrian conflict versus Exhibit B that requires vehicles to cross the raised crosswalk. So that's that pinch point, if you can remember that. Also, Exhibit A design provided for two-way traffic coming in and out of that parking area. From a public safety perspective, the, both chiefs the... both chiefs supported Exhibit A. From a... from the police side of the House, public safety side, they're... they liked the turnaround in A because for their patrols, it gave them a bigger line of sight into the park. And in the evenings, their lights could illuminate the park, and they'd have, again, better line of sight in there. And from the firefighting, paramedic side, again, that Exhibit A space had more space for them to maneuver their vehicles. Staff's recommendation is Exhibit A. But as mentioned, all four of the items that you asked for are in both plans. And I want to reiterate the collaboration that we have developed with the neighborhood group to work together on the restoration of the park. And the neighborhood group is... they're out there fundraising, and so we'll be able to utilize those funds on meaningful plants, furnishings, play spaces, et cetera. So with that, I am, again, asking for a recommendation, primarily so that way I can develop a budget to be included in next fiscal year CIP.
Councilman Montoya?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Kristi, I had a question. So I didn't realize, if you go back to the Exhibit B, so the red area, when they're... when you have someone entering in there, so they're dropping off on the right, and then they're crossing through a raised crosswalk to go through, and there's a chance of... there's a high likelihood of pedestrian traffic through there with that model versus the circular section, the... in Exhibit A, you don't have that conflict. Is... am I understanding that correctly as well?
Yes, you are.
Yeah, I gotta say, given that, and I'm sensitive to Eric's concern, because I think it's important we put restoration at the forefront of this project. I've received that message loud and clear from constituents. But I also think, from a public safety perspective, I don't really love the idea of cars interfacing with pedestrians as much as I'm seeing what would be likely on Exhibit B. That worries me. Because especially, the nature of the pedestrians are small children. And I have small children, and I know how they are, and they can get squirmy, or they can run out in front of cars sometimes. And so I'd love to minimize as much as possible pedestrian interface with traffic. I think that's, in the current kind of structure of what we have over there now, that's my single biggest concern about it right now, is that it's just not super safe. And so...
I agree.
Exhibit A makes more sense, unless there's some way to avoid that in Exhibit B and still achieve the same effect. I don't see why we would do it, because the public safety component for children is just too big for me. Thank you.
You're welcome. And if I may, in terms of Exhibit A, to Councilmember Moore's point, this is a conceptual design. As we go into construction, there might be an opportunity to tighten it up a little bit more, so visually it wouldn't take up as much. But admittedly, it does take up more than Exhibit B.
Councilwoman Furrorth?
Thank you, Mayor. I was definitely on our field trip, sensitive to the lots of money that we received as a city back in 2000. So I definitely understand, and we all did unanimously want to restore as much as we possibly could. But in 2000, there was no splash pad in this area. And I think that's the difference now, is that in the past, this didn't have quite as many small children in our plans of who was gonna be recreating in this park as we have now. It's... in the summertime, it's packed. There isn't enough benches. There isn't enough, you know... there isn't enough shady places, too. But... so I am absolutely supportive now of Exhibit A. I understand, you know, it'd be ideal if we didn't have APS there, and we could take as much spots as we wanted. But we, you know, we're living with a fixed area. And I do appreciate the drop-off zone where moms can safely unbuckle children, you know, from car seats and those kind of things, and get them out. And I would hate to see all of that intertwining at an intersection as Exhibit B has currently today. So I'm with the other one. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Moore, did you have another question or comment?
I do, Mayor. Thank you. I want to take a second stab at this, because the proposal that says Exhibit A is gonna like, minimize cars going over the raised crosswalk is false, because every single car, whether they're using the drop-off point or just bypassing the drop-off point and going directly to parking, they're gonna go over that same raised crosswalk. So you're gonna have the same number of vehicles crossing the raised crosswalk in Exhibit A as you are in Exhibit B. There's no difference. So not with the number of vehicles crossing over the crosswalk, because they've got to enter the park to park. And so if they're coming into A, and then they're gonna take a right to go park, they're crossing over that raised crosswalk and any vehicles that aren't gonna drop off are gonna drive over that raised crosswalk. So again, I'm going in favor of the original intent of the 2000 Master Plan to restore the park as much as possible. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may? So there is not a raised crosswalk in Exhibit A. It's just a crosswalk that is... oh, whoops. So that's a crosswalk that's printed on the asphalt. It's not... Exhibit A does not have a raised crosswalk. Exhibit B does have a raised crosswalk. And you're correct. All vehicles going into the parking space will go over that raised crosswalk. However, vehicles that are parked and for the drop-off, they will be going over the pathway as well. So there's a bit of a dual conflict there, if you will. And if you can see that, right? So where that pinch point is, is where a vehicle will either go in and out. And to the right of that, or to the east, if you will, of that, where the little brown area is, that's where the trail kind of aligns into the park. And so as you're pulling through for the drop-off area, you're crossing the trail to the drop-off area. So just wanted to make sure that that distinction was made, that there's not a raised crosswalk in Exhibit A.
Okay, so my question is, why is there a raised crosswalk versus a non-raised crosswalk in the two different exhibits? Why would they have a different designed crosswalk?
There were two different concepts. So this design was provided by the Prescott Alternative Transportation Group and the Coalition. And the raised crosswalk and that pinch point was intentional by design. And I believe they will be talking about that in community comment.
But I guess my point is, whether that crosswalk is raised or not raised, you're still gonna have the same number of cars entering the parking lot. And so let's focus on the restoration of the park, and not how many cars are gonna be crossing that crosswalk, because it's the same whether it's raised or not raised.
Councilman Gambogi?
This conversation's beginning to concern me. You know, there's a difference between driving to a trailhead so you can go hiking. We're talking about mothers and children getting to a splash pad. So if I had my choice, I'd take the February 11th design. But being ever one to compromise, I would choose Exhibit A.
Councilman Montoya?
Yeah, I... thank you, Mayor. I kind of look at this, and I appreciate where you're coming from, Eric. I do. But I think, when I look at Exhibit A, and this isn't to knock, you know, I think it's hard... Kim Lee Horn is a professional engineering company that did the design for Exhibit A. And it may be a measure of how they were able to construct theirs versus Exhibit A. But what seems evident to me is that you have multiple walking ingresses that don't interact with cars in Exhibit A. If you look at it closely, there's two ways to get into the splash pad, or even into the park, that don't involve interfacing with cars. And in Exhibit B, you only have one other point to get into the splash pad area without avoiding cars. And it's the Kids Adventure Trail, and it's pretty far down in the parking lot. And so I think by virtue of the way that the ingress and egress is out of that splash pad, that Exhibit A does more to keep pedestrian traffic. And frankly, there's a lot of bicycle traffic that goes through that park as well, away from cars. And again, I want to restore this park as much as possible, but I think we have a debt of service to the users of that park as well, to keep them safe. Thank you.
All right, I think we can take public comment now.
Sue Knapp?
I hope I can fit this in three minutes. Oy, oy, oy. I'm gonna go through my talk... oh, sorry. Okay. I'm gonna go through what I had planned. I think it will answer a lot of your questions. But I would also be available for, you know, digging deeper. So let's try this. And so I stay with, you know, the mayor's three minutes. My name is Sue Knapp. I'm Vice President of Prescott Alternative Transportation and a member of the West Granite Creek Park Restoration Coalition. First, we all want to say thank you for saving our park on February 11th. You are all the heroes. So please, keep that in mind as I continue. We are so grateful that we're at this step to restore our park and trail. Today, I have to delve into design details because of my 30-plus years of training and consulting at the national and international level. So I am very extremely familiar with transportation design at... in the US and around the world, for... especially for bicycle and pedestrian safety. There are serious concerns with Plan A, and I hope I can clear that up here. The drop-off area is high-speed. They will be coming in from Granite Street, and if you've seen how it was working with the dirt parking lot, they come in very fast. It increases... yeah, and it's also directly on top of the Greenways Trail. So this increases the conflict between cars and trail users, especially those using Granite Street. So Councilwoman Montoya, I need to... I need to underscore that, that there's a lot of bicycle and pedestrian traffic, and that's how the trail was intended as a transportation trail to and from Granite Street, not just Sam Hill. Okay? So it disregards that this section of the Greenways Trail was built to federal transportation standards, which are 10 feet wide, directly connected to the street system. It assumes trail users only enter and exit via Sam Hill when most actually use Granite Street. Remember, the splash pad is only open three to four months a year, and the rest of the time, the whole year, including those three to four months, they are coming and going through Granite Street. It does not reduce speeds, even across the Sam Hill crosswalk. And as Councilman Moore pointed out, that's now two-way, that there could be two cars going when children or trail users are using it. It forces cars onto the trail and onto the path of trail users. People traveling under their own power do not follow circuitous routes. If you could... I don't... anyway, if you have the Plan A, that would be fantastic.
Do you have one more minute?
I know, okay. Number A is right on top of our trail that we built back in 2000. And it is illegal, under Title 23 U.S.C. subsection 217H, to place cars onto trails. It starts with motorized vehicles, may not be permitted on trails and pedestrian walkways under this section. Okay. There are also false assumptions about Plan B. A U-turn is not needed. I think we saw that. And the narrow one-lane choker is a common design to slow cars down dramatically. So as Councilman Moore noted out...
You have 30 seconds.
Okay. Let me see. Given these serious concerns, I have to ask, especially stemming from the drop-off area, would you reconsider the drop-off area? Is it needed? You can see it doesn't change that much space. And if you still require it, we hope that we can be involved in a redesign of that right on top of the trail to move it away and separate it from the trail.
Your time's expired.
And I have to say, please understand how thankful we are for saving our trail. So... and I'm here to answer more questions. Gabriel Repak?
I would like to thank you all for closing the park with... because this means that now it can restore to its original state. And I think that that's just really important, that it does, because, again, like, there are lots of cars going in at high speeds. And, yeah, I just feel like it's really helpful that it got closed. And I would also like to thank Kristi Diaz for... our Parks and Recreation Director, for helping us close the park. Thank you. And also, my mom will now hand out tokens of gratitude to you.
That's all, Mayor.
I think I have... we've discussed this. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we adopt the proposal as presented by the Parks and Recreation Director for Exhibit A.
Second? Okay, we have a first and a second for adopting Exhibit A. Please vote.
Pass is 5-2.
Okay, we'll move on to 9C.
Approval of WSA 25-045 Water Service Application submitted by Dalc Design Group on behalf of owner Jim Thomas. Location APN 103-20-598P comprising 6.97 acres in T14N R01W Section 31 Southwest 1/4.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Brian Reese, I'm the Water Resources Manager here for the city under the Community Development Department. Today, we have a water service agreement for you. It has 12 units, top 12 casita units located here at the Espire Complex. And you can see here on the screen in front of you, located between Gateway Boulevard and the ball courts at the Espire Complex. Over at the Pine Ridge Mall, I think I called it the Gateway Mall on your agenda, but...
The marketplace.
Yes, the marketplace. Thank you. So per the amended 22 Water Management Policy... trying to bring this down a little bit. Okay. The application for water service application was received. The applicant did a demand analysis by his engineers for this proposed project. There was no formal planning application required with this project per the Land Development Code. So one of the things I wanted to clarify is that I noticed that in some of the wording in my agenda, it says apartment, it says multifamily. We utilized the multiplier from the worm for the apartment complex. It's the most suited for this project. But this project is a short-term rental proposed project. It's not a residential, not long-term residential. I just wanted to make sure that was clarified. So these will be short-term rentals for people who want to come over to the complex, stay, enjoy the area, maybe for tournaments, other events at the... at the... at the Espire Complex. So the demand analysis was done for this project utilizing the worm multiplier of 0.12 acre-feet per unit. On top of that, there's 0.4 acre-feet of landscape proposed. And they utilized the drought-tolerant recommended 1.5 acre-feet per acre for irrigation for the landscape purposes. This shows the proposed locations for the 12 units, a simplified plan, and shows the location for the proposed landscape. Total for... between the indoor use and the... Total between the indoor use and the landscape is 2.04 acre-feet for the project per year. Currently, in the non-residential budget, there's 23.23 acre-feet left for this budget year for non-residential projects. So, in summary, we have a 12-unit casita complex. The estimated demand for the buildings is 1.44 acre-feet. The estimated demand for the landscape is 0.6 acre-feet. There's no previous usage, and the total demand is 2.04 acre-feet. So, with that, we have the applicant here.
Councilman Moore, do you want to ask your question now?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I know oftentimes when we have issues that come before us that related to water, we talk about how the facility's gonna be metered, if it's gonna be metered individually, or if it's gonna be metered as a unit. So, I was just wondering if you could address that. Are they gonna be individually metered, or is it the whole project gonna be one meter?
Yeah, I guess, it looks like it will be master-metered.
Okay. I just wanted to raise that issue, because that's something that we often talk about to try to control water usage, but on a short-term rental, that's gonna be really hard to monitor, because they're gonna be coming and going, and there's no way to, you know, indicate who's using more water. But, just wanted to raise the issue.
Okay, yes, and that basically completes my presentation. We do have the applicant here, if you have any other questions related to the project.
Apparently, from the map, it looks like it'll eliminate the roadway on the exterior before you get outside of the Gateway Boulevard road. So, if you were trying to, and I've used that number of times, to be able to go around to either Augies or the other entrance areas, now you'll have to go all the way around Gateway Boulevard and come in, I think, over there by, what's that, the Texas Roadhouse? Come in that way? So, that's the only option, right? No?
Would you like to come up and speak to that?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Jim Thomas, owner of Espire Sports. Mayor, good, you said at the beginning this was gonna be a short agenda, but you missed it. Anyways, no, the roadway will still be open, the, what we call outer loop. We're actually pushing the units up a little bit closer towards the outdoor courts, and so, that roadway will always remain open. The current owner of Pine Ridge Marketplace is building 144 apartments right to the west of us, but there still will be access through that complex also, so there will always be Ring Road, or, yeah.
That's good to know. Mayor Protam?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to give you support for this. I think it's great. We've all, all of us living in Prescott here have watched the Pine Ridge Mall make a transformation, and I think it's very important to import customers. I think this will be a great way to help revive the mall, so congratulations. And your success with Espire Sports is great, too.
Thank you. And if I could take a moment to thank all of you guys for all of your service, I know some of you are sailing off into the sunset. Please pick up pickleball and come join us and get healthy, but thank you so much for your service. I really do appreciate. I know you don't hear it a lot, and so, thank you, guys, for everything that you do. It's crystal clear to me that you all care very much about our city, so, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, any public comment?
No.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve WSA 25-045.
Second.
We have a motion. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, item 9D.
Presentation of discussion regarding an appeal of the Prescott Preservation Commission's denial of the 47-room hotel at 136, 138, and 140 South Monizuma Street.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Protam, and Council members. My name is Alex Bramlett. I'm the Planning Manager for Community Development. Thanks for having me this afternoon. We're here to discuss the Prescott Plaza Hotel, which is record number HP25-006. So, taking it from a high-elevation view here momentarily, the property is located at 136, 138, and 13140 South Monizuma Street. It's across the street to the west of the Courthouse Plaza, located within the famous Whiskey Row. The zoning district is Downtown Business District, which is the purple areas on the map. The property location is in the blue. The zoning district enforces many things, but primarily uses and setbacks. The proposed use of the hotel is allowed by right in this zoning district, and there are no required zoning setbacks. In addition to the baseline zoning, there are also historic district overlays. In this case, we have two. On the left-hand side, you'll see the properties located in the orange area, and this is the National District. It's called the Courthouse Plaza National District. And on the right-hand side, you can see the properties located in the blue area. It's the local district, so it's also called the Courthouse Plaza, but just the local district. Some differences is that National Districts identify properties, main properties, for historic resources, and the local district is intended to protect those historic resources. And so, how do we do this? The local historic preservation districts are how we implement the process of design review, and we do that through the Historic Preservation Master Plan. And this was adopted in January of 1998. Through that plan, it is a guide for the city, the PPC, and the public in understanding and applying preservation principles. Shortly following the adoption of the plan, ordinance number 3744 was adopted for the Courthouse Plaza Local Preservation District. Adoption of this ordinance established authority of the Courthouse Plaza Local District to fall under Prescott Preservation Commission's jurisdiction, and the ordinance is utilized for review and approval of all projects. So, just a little project introduction. The existing building is not located within the National Register of Historic Places, and it is not considered a contributing resource within the district. The current businesses are Mountain Spirit Gallery, Harley-Davidson, and Wild at Heart. The proposed hotel building will be 47 rooms, four-story, and have an open-air terrace with a retractable roof enclosure on the fourth floor that will host a wine bar overlooking the plaza. There will be regular and Juliet balconies at the front and the rear of the building that will feature wrought iron railings. The rear of the hotel facing the alley will feature a hotel mercantile shop, as well as a secondary entrance and elevator for the guests. So, the city outsourced the review of this application to a senior architectural historian, Courtney Mooney, with Broadbent and Associates. The city also asked the State Historic Preservation Office, or SHIPO, to do a voluntary review, it's not required, which we received, and it was included in the packet. The SHIPO review was focused solely on the Secretary of Interior Standards on more of a national level, and it specifically focused on Standard 9, as Standard 3 and Standard 10 were met in their entirety. So, this presentation's gonna incorporate the findings from Broadbent and Associates, the consultant who reviewed the project, and some elements from SHIPO as well. Just a quick process overview, we are at kind of Phase 1, which is just the design, so, working through the Courthouse Plaza Local Preservation District guidelines. They will, there will be several processes following, including the water service agreement, and then construction permits, which are gonna focus on structural engineering, kind of buildings, zoning codes, right-of-way encroachments, things of that nature. So, diving into the criteria, the first one is that all setbacks shall be zero for at least 50% of the first-floor facade, and 100% of the second and third-floor facade, including the roofline. As the four-story is not specifically addressed in the guidelines, Broadbent completed an evaluation of the overall design leaning on the Secretary of Interior Standards, and this specifically for rehabilitation. Standards 9 and 10 provide guidance on new work, including additions, exterior alterations, and new construction. As the proposed project is considered new construction, the standards for rehabilitation apply. Looking specifically at Broadbent's analysis for the siting of the building criteria, Broadbent found that the proposed project meets Standard 9, and that it will be differentiated from and compatible with the adjacent historic buildings, specifically existing historic materials, features, size, scale, and proportion, and massing. The fourth floor is setback an adequate distance, so as to be minimally visible and give an appearance of a three-story building from the public right-of-way. Broadbent also found that the proposed project meets specific guidelines for rooftop additions in the standards for rehabilitations, which state that a rooftop addition on a multi-story building should be setback at least one full bay from the primary elevations, be inconspicuous when viewed from the surrounding streets, and be limited to one story. Broadbent found that the proposed project will not negatively impact the integrity of the district and its ability to convey its historic significance. Broadbent also found that through the setback, it's no technically one full bay, it's found to be sufficiently setback to not be intrusive. As this building is new construction within an established historic district, Broadbent also consulted the National Parks Service guidelines for new construction within the boundaries of a historic district. And Broadbent found that the proposed project respects the historic setback and streetscape, it does not obscure, damage, or destroy character-defining features of the district, and that the massing, size, scale, and architectural features of the proposed project is compatible with the historic buildings within the district. Moving on to SHIPO's analysis, which again is not required, but they did provide a courtesy review for us. They felt that the hotel facade is sited appropriately in the same plane as other building entrances along South Monizuma Street. The new building does not obscure character-defining features in its neighbors. In relation to building exactance, they found that the rhythm of the listed buildings along Resy Row is interrupted by the height of the new hotel. However, SHIPO acknowledged that the former proposed five-story building has been reduced to four stories, which is more appropriate but unprecedented. SHIPO also recommended that when infill buildings are taller than their neighbors, the upper story should be setback to minimize their visibility. They understand that the current version features a patio rooftop deck covering that extends the building facade, with the understanding that the city recommended the applicant bring the patio roof to the front of the building. So, SHIPO recommended that with this addition, they suggest the material be revisited to be less conspicuous, or alternatively, make that retractable, which they have done. The siting of the building criteria continued. Looking at kind of a site-plan version, Monizuma Street is off to the right-hand side. They're taking up the full width, which is what we want. We want a continuous line along South Monizuma Street to increase the pedestrian experience. And then, on the sides along the building, they have set it back inward to meet the fire code, and it goes the entire length of the whole property. Looking at the massing criteria for the height, the maximum height allowed in this zoning district is 48 feet, and you can see a couple different versions. Starting on the left-hand side is now Monizuma Street, that's a maximum of 36 feet 6 inches. And then, in the center, at the point of the elevator overrun, is 48 feet. And then, on the right-hand side of the screen is towards the alley, and that's 46 feet and 5 inches. So, just a quick plug for the dimension orientation. In terms of the Juliet balconies, those are gonna be, width-wise, depending on the width of the window, the depth is 1 1/2 feet, and then, the height of the railing is 3 feet 6 inches. Similarly, for the actual regular balconies, the height of the railing is 3 feet 6 inches. The width is dependent upon the width of the window, and then, the depth is gonna be 5 feet deep. You can see that at the top of the third floor is where that wine patio begins, and the top of the parapet is 36 feet 6 inches. It's then stepped back the 15 feet 3 inches. This rendering does not include the patio covering. And then, the top of the fourth floor is the 43 feet 6 inches, but then, that elevator overrun is the 48-foot max. So, the design of the building, fenestration, doors and windows, this is certainly the most detailed portion of the ordinance, with very specific measurements and criteria related to storefront windows, non-storefront windows, and then, the relationship of walls to openings. So, Broadbent did various measurements to determine the project met the criteria. In summary, a wide variety of combinations is possible under all of the required elements, and the relationship of walls to opening is possible, and the applicant has met them all. In general, looking at, obviously, detailed measurements, but vertical orientation, certain maximum distances for one window to the next, and we did those measurements and determined that they complied. The design of the building criteria in terms of the roofs, they have also complied in this element as well. They are doing a flat roof with a slight pitch for water purposes. They are doing the appropriate material, and the parapet is gonna be on the third floor, and then, they have the flat roof on the fourth floor. Moving on, building material, criteria, wall, and fenestration materials. So, they have used stone masonry, they've changed a few things. The street level will have a natural stone wainscoting. Above that, to the top of the building will be the brick veneer, and that's the primary exterior elevation. Cornices, lintels, and balconies will be used in natural stone. The alley facade will feature red brick veneer as the primary material, along with stone for detail. The first-floor Courthouse Plaza windows will feature canvas awnings in a burgundy-stripe shade color. All windows are wood-framed double-hung style, and the front-entry doors and wood-frame are transome windows. And the suspended portago above the entrance will feature the Prescott Plaza Hotel signage. Additionally, SHIPO noted that they were pleased to see the hotel facade had been changed to brick with a modest stone wainscoting, which better fits the color和material range of the district. In summary, Broadbent and Associates finds that the proposed project meets all applicable ordinance requirements under siting, design, buildings, and other considerations. The applicant is still in the beginning stages of the overall process, just looking at that design element. Just another note for zoning purposes, that hotels are allowed within the Downtown Business District, and then, further, keep in mind that approval of the design does not constitute approval of the entire construction project. This project did go to the Prescott Preservation Commission meeting. There is a special meeting held on October 20th, and they reviewed and discussed the proposal, and it was denied 3 to 2. So, the applicant is appealing that decision to be before you all here today at City Council. And with that, some recommended motion options are to affirm, reverse, affirm in part, or reverse in part, the decision of the Prescott Preservation Commission for project number HP25-006. Thank you.
Concerns or comments from the council? No, none? Councilwoman Ferworth?
Thank you, Mayor. Spent the weekend analyzing this, and I want to thank the applicant for addressing several of my concerns that I expressed at the August 5 meeting. First, I appreciate coming up with a plan on how to have zero setback to the roofline with the retractable roof frame. I think that meets the intent. The second one is the alley storefront. You did include opaque, solid-bottom panels. You meet our storefront criteria. You have a wood-and-glass door in the back, so thank you. It looks like Prescott. The third area I want to thank you for is the wood-and-glass entry-door design. It absolutely fits Whiskey Row. In fact, Mr. Stroh and I went back and forth with each other, so I appreciate you meeting that, and it does fit in Prescott. And finally, the color of the roof material that I raised to reduce the glare has also been addressed. My two remaining concerns largely follow when I read SHIPO's October 25 evaluation. The first one is, I appreciate the patio roof, as I said before, but I agreed with SHIPO's point that it is pretty dark and imposing. That was one of the reasons I wanted to get the new designs, which was nice to see. When the roof is retracted, it does lighten things up, but if there was any way to have the final material of the frames be less conspicuous, less industrial, that would be appreciated. And then, finally, my concern is, remains with the balconies, particularly the balconies on the alleyway. As I look at our fire and emergency response alley, that's actually painted in, within the alley to the left, is to where people can temporarily park and unload, or the trashcans... alley to the left is to where people can temporarily park and unload, or the trashcans. The right side, which will be right up to hugging close to this building, is where the concern is that the depth of the hotel room balconies will interfere with our right-of-way for safety reasons. So I drove it again today personally to check it out, and I'm just very concerned about the balconies in the rear. And then finally, I remain concerned about full-size balconies in the back. To correct some things that had been said previously, a four-story building was unanimously approved by the Preservation Commission on September 13th, which is the Assembly at Old City Hall. It did have what they considered faux Juliet balconies, that's set the first time we're ever going to see balconies in the district. Those were 1 feet 10-inch depth. I find it fascinating that your Juliet balconies are even a tiny bit smaller, which is fantastic, but the 3 foot 6 inch, I'm sorry, the 5-foot depth does concern me that you're in the public way. So I know it's a feature you'd like to give, but it sets a new precedence from an architectural feature design, and Shippeau also mentioned that. So both of my concerns are lined up with Shippeau's input as well, and that's all I have to say.
Councilman Gamboge.
A lot what frames my thought in this process goes back to the 2023 resident survey. And in that survey, we produced a quadrant analysis, and in the southeast quadrant is an area where it's really important to the residents, and we're doing a lousy job. There are two entries there. One is healthcare. I don't think anybody can argue with that. And the other is economy. So when I look at this proposal, this is a proposal that addresses the economy. And I think it's important to state unequivocally, for some people, there's no amount of modifications that'll render their approval. This has been through many generations. I think, if my memory serves me correctly, there were 26 criteria, and all 26 criteria have been met. So in my position, it's time to bring this to closure.
Mayor Protam?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank Doug and Mr. Grissette for being so adaptable. I know this has cost you a lot of money. We've got a lot of micromanaging going on, and I see it happening. We're not here to redesign your project. I think you've done a great job in adapting to all of the requests that you've done. I think what you've got there is a great design. It's going to fit in great. One thing we've never addressed is the economic impact downtown, and I think it's going to really help the downtown area to have this beautiful hotel in that place. So thank you, and I'm a yes on this, and I think it's time for you to be able to move forward. Thank you.
Councilwoman Montoya?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sympathetic to the developer and his design team. We've put them through a lot, and I think enough is enough at this point. I don't think that trying to further delay this project is good from a public policy perspective, and I think it's downright dangerous from a liability to the city's, you know, legal concerns related to this. And I think if we don't take our roles as fiduciaries for the city seriously, that there will be really far-reaching and bad consequences for the community, and there will still be a hotel on Whiskey Row. And so I think it serves us well to remember that Mr. Grissette has by right zoning to have a hotel on his property. He owns it. You may not like that personally, but as a fiduciary for the city, if you go vote against this project, you are putting massive liability onto the city that will be irrevocable and will have far-reaching consequences for this community. And so to me, I'm a yes, and if you're a no, you own it.
Councilman Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate all the comments. I'm a yes also, but I want to share a concern that I have that Councilwoman Fairworth shared. Her concern, however, was with the back of the property with the full-size balconies. My concern is the full-size balconies in the front, because at a 5-foot depth, those people are literally over people walking underneath them on the public sidewalk below. They drop a wine glass, they drop a wine bottle, they drop anything. You've got a liability issue with a 5-foot balcony that's overhanging a sidewalk by 5 feet. I don't think that's a good decision. To me, I think that should be modified to be a very small, like a Juliet balcony in the front, as well as in the back. That's my suggestion, but other than that, I'm a yes.
Councilman Grady?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I concur with what Councilman Moore was just describing with respect to the Juliet balconies. I'm persuaded by the Shippeau recommendations that those should all be Juliet-designed balconies, and I'm concerned at the precedent that that might set. But overall, I'm a yes as well, because I believe that the project is a substantial compliance with the master plan, and I appreciate the extra effort that the city went through to retain outside advice from a preservation standpoint on these compliance issues, as many of us don't have that specific technical expertise, and I think this would be a major contribution to the downtown.
I think we can take public comment now.
Rick Spring?
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Rick Spring. I'm the chair of the Prescott Preservation Commission, and as you were told, we did reject this on the October 20th meeting. We are not against a hotel. We understand it's going to get built. We did reject it 3 to 2, and for a number of reasons, and we're also going to, I want to get into the hotel that's at the old City Council or City Hall. That we did approve. At the time it was submitted, it was pretty much a holiday in on steroids. It was large. It did have an open terrace, and it was over 58 feet and months of other stuff. They worked with us. They brought the height down, and unlike this, though, they did get rid of the terrace, and they did go, and yes, the portion over City Hall, part of that is under our jurisdiction, part is not. Where the City Hall footprint is and part of the parking lot from the corner of Cortez and there to the alleyway is our jurisdiction. The rest does not. We could have, I guess, said, put a three-story there, and they could have put four stories or more on the portion that we have no jurisdiction over. So it's kind of a compromise. But what they brought before us was they deleted the terrace, which was recommended and is recommended for this one. They did the Juliet balconies, which is new to the city, but there was no ordinance that they could not do it, so that was passed. And the zero setback was extended extreme to the roof line where this one is not. It was, there's still, the fourth floor is still open. According to the master plan, there was a zero setback from all sides, including the front, sides, and the back. Those are pretty much our major takeaways from this, but in the master plan, it does say that the, and Alex brought it up, the 50% of the first-floor facade and 100% of the second and third-floor facades, comma, including the roof line. That means the walls should go up. You can't have a retractable roof or something in between that does make that look like a fourth story. I know we beat this many times before, and in the master plan, it does limit to three stories. It is in there numerous times. And when this adoption of ordinance 3744 for the Courthouse Plaza, the master plan does limit three stories, especially when you're building within an infill development, which there is a picture of it, actually, and I think you have it in your guidelines. There'll be four-floor install saying no to it. The other ones for three stories were yeses. The fourth floor was a no. That's one of our biggest concerns. We're not objecting to a hotel there. Thank you.
Regina Kilmer?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Regina Kilmer, and I'm concerned about this project. I'm glad the presenter opened with the slide that shows the preservation master plan and also ordinance 3447. We all know by now that the master plan says the building above three stories will stop immediately. We all know this. I think that point is made in every meeting. So I'd like to talk about ordinance 3447, the ordinance is law. On page six of these guidelines, it gives a picture of a building that looks almost identical to what is being proposed. Underneath the picture is a word "no." Now, we can argue about whether it says "no" because it's taller than the existing neighbors. We can argue about whether it is because it is a four-story building. But the bottom line is the ordinance says "no." I have a picture comparing the proposed hotel to the image that right here. I've made copies for the council members. Second, page six of the ordinance demands a 4-foot paramount, parapet for roofs. It gives no exceptions. I do not see that that roof has a 4-foot parapet. Again, this is ordinance. I'm asking the city to follow the secretary standard with regard to massing. This building is too large. I'm asking that the city follow the master plan, which states buildings above three stories shall cease immediately, and I'm asking the city to follow ordinance 3447. Thank you.
Mike King?
Mr. Mayor and council members, and citizens of Prescott, and anybody watching and anybody who will watch. My name is Michael King, and I'm a 30-year resident of Prescott. I live on Aaron Circle. I've been on the Prescott Preservation Commission for 10 years. I've attended all of the commission meetings and the appeal meetings before council regarding this hotel. I'm hearing some good things. I'm going to go off my remarks, because we did, as Chairman Spring said, we did vote 3 to 2. We had some differences of opinions on interpretation, and the last speaker said it prohibits anything taller than three stories. We have the flexibility. You have the advice from your council. If it's not stated in the guidelines or the ordinance, it still can be considered. So you're not limited by three stories. You can have a four-story building. Okay, I'll just build on something I heard here today, which I didn't know I would hear. Lois, you and I are in agreement. The last meeting, we asked the proponent to soften the four stories, the setbacks, by putting a roof over the top, which is a false roof. They've come back with a retracting roof. I find the retracting roof to actually highlight the fact that the building is four stories. I don't agree that we should have a retracting roof or any kind of roof structure, because from the roof view, going back to another councilperson, from the view that you see, you focus on the street view. That's why we're not concerned about balconies in the back as being in compliance. The last, another thing is, so in my opinion, it doesn't meet that. Perhaps you agree. At least, I have one councilperson. The other one was at the last meeting, we were dealing with the Julians, and I'm hearing that here to do, the Julian balconies. We'd rather not have the, we'd rather not have the larger accessible. We would like Julian balconies. I agree with that, too. And for, and that's on the front where that really should be focused. And with regard to the statement regarding the assembly decision on four stories and balconies, Julian balconies, that hotel, about half of it, not, maybe not quite half, but a half, is in the same courthouse district as the hotel on Whiskey Row. So why didn't we struggle with that four-story balcony back then, just because some of it was going to be outside? We should have applied those things at that time, too, and had this debate, this open community debate. You are limited, we were limited to what, you know, there's people talking about other things, parking, sewer, water, event disturbance. Ours is the ordinance. It's about how it looks. That's all our commission could do. That's the purview you're under right now. That's your, that's your focus. Those are your sideboards. I do like the dialogue that you're communicating your differences. It's important that the community and you each other know where you're going to vote, and I appreciate what you're doing. You're highlighting your concerns, you're highlighting where you're headed to on the vote. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thomas Staley?
Yeah, my name is Tom Staley, and I've been a resident for over 40 years here, and I do not have a vested interest in this project or in this issue. I do have a vested interest in fairness and logic in our city government. I had four pages here of comments that I was going to try and convince you guys to pass this in the spirit of fairness. Some of the points I was going to make was that, you know, we, as far as my opinion is, the council set a lot of guidelines for the development, the design of this project. The owner did that, came back, and he had new guidelines. I didn't think that was fair. The other thing I didn't think was fair is that the old City Hall property passed seemingly without any problem, without redesigning, which the council has done this project, in my opinion, and that just went through with no problems. But that, this particular project has suffered nothing but problems. And the other real bigger problem was what Mr. Montoya said. If you allowed that hotel at the old City Hall property to go through as easy as it did, and then you would have voted this one down, your liability would have been through the roof. I agree with that. Nobody can determine that for sure, but obviously, common sense tells us that. So from what I heard earlier on the liass votes, it appears that it may, it may pass, and I applaud the city council in getting this thing passed. Thank you.
Don Beal?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Don Beal, 951 Norris Road, longtime Prescott resident, 50 years. That beats his 40 by 10. Been involved in five projects in downtown Montezuma Street here in Prescott. Proud of every one of them. One is right across the street, the old American Laundry Building. Turned it into Sites Office Products. I think today it's called the porch. The Ballantine Building, which used to be the Roar Bloom Building downtown, had the aluminum siding on it. We took that off. Have to mention that when we owned, when we owned that building, we wouldn't tell anybody we owned it because it was so damn ugly. We took the siding off, and we were heroes. Everybody loved us. Preservation Commission worked well with us, had no problems. Is part of the historical society, the Horace Historic Downtown Society. In my time, we called it the hysterical society, but we got past that. The point very simply is, progress is sometimes inconvenient. The hotel that is being proposed here is going to be inconvenient downtown, but the prog- progress we're going to have and helping have a vibrant downtown community is going to be well worth it. We're replacing a couple of old, ugly buildings with what's going to be a beautiful hotel. And again, best part of it, in my opinion, is, I'm now a no-growther. I'm out of business, so I'm a no-growther anymore. But I hate hypocrisy. Build a hotel, let people come in, spend the weekend, spend their money downtown, and then send them home. I love the idea. So anyway, I just hope that you pass this and wish the gentlemen well. Thank you.
Stacy Brown.
I want to start by saying that I don't have a personal preference about the historic permit for the Plaza Hotel. What matters to me is how the council carries out its role, being good stewards of taxpayer dollars and making sure Prescott continues to be a great place to live while managing growth responsibly. I'd like to share a few thoughts on this project for your consideration. First, it seems the Preservation Commission currently has the authority to approve or deny permits. I believe that authority should belong solely to the City Council. You are the elected representatives and the ones accountable to the people. The commissions you charter should advise you, not make the decisions. And as this matter is here today for your final decision, shouldn't the process work that way from the start? Clear rules, clear accountability, and no duplication of effort? Second, it sounds like the Preservation Commission and the city's expert interpret the ordinance differently. The commission sees it as unclear on whether a four-story building is allowed, and they've gone with the more literal reading. The expert, however, interprets the ordinance by the height of the building. Therefore, a four-story building is not precluded. But if that logic holds, then what's to stop a five- or a six-story building, as long as it's under the height cap? That's the kind of ambiguity that has created the problem we are now faced with. You now have two perspectives, one from your citizen advisors and one from your subject matter expert. Which carries more weight is your call, but I urge you to base the decision on sound policy, not on someone's interpretation, and definitely not on fear of lawsuit. If last year's four-story project on Cortez Street is now being treated as precedent, that's problematic, too. Precedents can slowly change the character of a city. I'd encourage the council in your direction today to clarify the intent of the ordinance, spell out how many stories are allowed in the historic district, and update the master plan so your Preservation Commission can do its job with clarity and consistency. And finally, if the applicant does get approval today, there are still plenty of decisions ahead. Please take a hard look at practical issues like parking and make sure the ordinances are clear so we don't have this same issue again. As always, thank you for your service.
That's all, Mayor.
Councilman Grady, did you have another comment?
No, I'm sorry.
All right. Any other comments or concerns in the council? All right, at this point, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to reverse the decision of the Prescott Preservation Commission.
Second. So your motion is what?
I make a motion to reverse the decision of the Prescott Preservation Commission.
That's correct, and I second it.
I'm surprised that you're voting to approve this.
She's reversing the...
Yeah, so a reversal would be an approval of the project. That's correct.
Motion is second. Please vote. I believe that concludes our agenda today.
It does indeed, Mayor.
all the challenges we've had to deal with over the last few weeks. "You'll never get to your destination if you stop and throw rocks at every dog that barks." So with that, this meeting is adjourned.